Good evening. Today is Monday, December 5th, 2022. This is a special meeting and workshop with the Board of Education. Do I have a motion to open the meeting? Lori, Second Cynthia, all in favor? All right, great. So we're going to go into executive session to discuss some legal and personnel matters. We're back out at 7:30 for the workshop. Do I have a motion to enter into executive session? Lori, Second Cynthia, all in favor? Okay, see you in about an hour. Thank you. All right, good evening again. Today is Monday, December 5th, 2022. This is a special meeting and workshop with the Board of Education. We actually already opened the meeting at 6:30 for an executive session. Now we're back from the executive session and ready to start the workshop. So no need to open the meeting. We've already done that. So we'll go to our first order of business, which is Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under our individual justice. All right, we can just launch right into our presentation. I'll turn it over to Dr. Goodman. Yeah, so this screen has to be visible, right?
You have one.
Good evening, everybody. I am delighted to be presenting on the progress we have made in advancing our strategic plan. As you know, our strategic plan is built on four pillars. This evening, we will focus on the first two, social-emotional learning and diverse needs of learners. In later presentations, we will explore the other two pillars and corresponding goals. These driving goals were presented at our October 3rd meeting. Our objective this evening is to detail our action items associated with these driving goals within just the first two pillars. Tonight will serve as a status update for the Board and for the community. It covers a lot of ground, and we ask that you hold your questions and comments until the end of the presentation. I want you to know that we do welcome them, though, at the end of the program. Please also note, we are not able to highlight all the great things that happened in our three schools. During our budget presentations, both building administrative teams will have the opportunity to highlight their successes, innovation, and progress in all four areas of the strategic plan. We identify very specific goals here, but our district is constantly responding to research, trends, and better practices. So let's dive in to our first pillar. As you know, our first pillar is dedicated to social-emotional learning. So much of what we do is tied to our belief that to access learning, all members of our school community must learn and demonstrate important social-emotional skills such as responsible decision-making and positive relationship skills. This year, we set our driving goal as the ones you see here. Provide training on social-emotional wellness and strategies for staff, students, and families. This was rooted in our belief that in order to best support our students, our family and staff need to be informed about the ways we can promote these critical learning skills to our students. In addition to attaining this goal, we identified three specific areas that would drive our progress. First, a series of workshops for families. Tonight, we will share with you our efforts to bring family evenings and workshops to our school community. You will hear about those that have taken place and those that are planned. We benefit from a close partnership with our PTA and local organizations, and we are leveraging these relationships to bring insightful workshops to our families. Secondly, professional learning for staff. In crafting our professional learning, we have taken a purposeful approach to supporting the social-emotional needs of our learners. You will hear this evening about workshops and trainings that have taken place and those that will take place to advance this driving goal. Lastly, our climate survey and follow-up actions. You can't change what you don't measure. We have prioritized the administration of our school climate survey. This data that we've already presented from last year and our recent administration is informing our follow-up. In the next few slides, we will explore each of these action items in detail. We will also shine a light on special initiatives such as extracurricular activities, celebrating student volunteerism, encouraging involvement in physical activities, sports, and exercise, the use of Rethink and health education curriculum to promote these goals, and our PBIS program at COTL to build our school culture and empower student voice. To get us started, I'm going to ask Mr. Dubellas and Mr. Kilgallen up with me to introduce the next slide. To support the district's driving goal here, this is one of a series of workshops for families, we have considered what types of workshops families are looking for. In close consultation with our school support staff and parent organizations, we have already been able to bring some of these events that you see here. First, Dr. Sweeney brought a workshop called Assessing Respite and Other Services. Through OPWDD, which is Office of Persons with Developmental Disabilities Front Door Program, this presentation helped parents learn how to initiate the process and then utilize resources through OPWDD to support their students through recreational activities and respite care. Secondly, as you know, we have made a strong effort to reach out to the community through our email blasts, our communication with the community. You may have noticed, if you look on our website, it has many different events posted, some hosted by us, some by the PTA, and some by local organizations. These are also published in our weekly Happenings newsletter. In this way, we seek to provide a one-stop shop collection to all potentially relevant and useful presentations for parents and families to consider. We are also hosting an open house for interested UPK families, and we will be presenting a series of workshops for our parents of students with disabilities, including how to prepare for annual reviews and topics such as sensory concerns, learning disabilities, and behavior.
We have also thought about ways to better integrate our efforts to promote social-emotional learning into our existing structures. At our principal's coffee, we focused on executive functioning and organization. Our school counselors and psychologists provided valuable information and strategies for our COTL families. Special thank you to Dr. Newman, Ms. Paduta, and Ms. Silver for their leadership in this area. Ms. Silver also sends out monthly newsletters that tie in to the SEL lessons from Rethink that she is currently teaching with our COTL Cubs.
So those are some of the things that we have already done, but we're also planning more opportunities for our families to get information on topics related to social-emotional learning. On January 18th at 7:00 PM, we are bringing in a local expert, Ms. Kara Santucci of Student Assistance Services, to present on the topic of bullying. Ms. Santucci is an anti-bullying certified staff developer and a community leader who has already presented to our administration and faculty on strategies to identify and prevent bullying. Student Assistance Services of Westchester is also partnering with us to bring in an interactive parent workshop on alcohol, tobacco, and drugs titled "In Plain Sight." This is a workshop that helps families recognize important indicators and warning signs that can indicate at-risk behavior. Additionally, our very own Dr. Keough and Dr. Sweeney will lead presentations on digital partnership, cyber safety, and executive functioning.
So in planning for professional learning, we've prioritized social-emotional learning in our training. In order to attract these efforts quantitatively, we are administering an efficacy survey for staff regarding SEL strategies and how they can integrate it into their instruction. Our behavior consultant continues to work with special and general education teachers on classroom management and individual behavior support. Mr. Dubellas mentioned our work with Ms. Santucci of Student Assistance Services. She also presented to our administrators and teachers on the definition of bullying, what it is, what it isn't, and how we can know the difference. She also helped administrators and teachers understand, better understand our responsibilities as outlined by the Dignity for All Students Act. Additionally, teachers receive training from our partners at all points, highlighting the importance of promoting positive behaviors through positive reinforcement. Our PAWS program, which Mr. Kilgallen will speak to shortly, is a perfect distillation of this concept. We also understand that if students don't feel safe, SEL functioning is hampered. As a result, we partnered with the Eastchester Police Department to ensure we know how to respond to an active shooter situation. As we are fortunate to have an SRO on campus, especially one as responsive and reliable as Officer Minio, this was the beginning of a conversation with administrators, teachers, and our facilities team. Officer Minio will be a part of future PD offerings and is following up with all questions he has received. Though the training was difficult to watch, teachers have more tools to help them think clearly in the event of an emergency. Looking ahead, we will schedule more opportunities for our teachers to work with staff developers on executive functioning supports, brain-based learning. Some of these strategies include self-assessments, self-reflections, student learning logs, facilitation grids, help boards, and discussion protocols. So now moving on to the climate survey and the follow-up. Last year, we reviewed the strategic plan's definition of social-emotional learning and considered what we believed we should see in our school community. To demonstrate progress toward these goals, we reviewed survey items from different sources and developed a series of approximately 20 questions that asked students to reflect on a sense of community, belongingness, fairness, and caring. This was developed with consultation from our teachers and support staff. The survey was administered around the midpoint of last year to students in grades four to 12 via Google Forms. We presented the results of the survey to our faculty, to the Board, and to the community at workshops. The data helped us to plan for the school year, especially in regard to the development of teacher training, the implementation of school-wide initiatives, and our work around the health education curriculum. This year, we administered the survey to the same age groups just prior to the Thanksgiving break.
So we did follow up with our COTL students in grades four and five, and our survey showed our students are mainly engaged and happy to be in school. We want to ensure, though, that we reach every student and they continue to grow. While this may all seem like a no-brainer, of course, students learn better when they feel safe and seen. The practice of creating and sustaining a positive school climate is our goal. Strong relationships are the foundation. High expectations, yes, but also strong supports. This is what you will be hearing from COTL as we talk about our new PAWS program and later in the presentation with our new RTI structure of strong supports.
We have also followed up at Tuckahoe Middle School as well as Tuckahoe High School. And though our climate survey showed the majority of students feel a connection to our schools, we wanted to make sure we targeted our follow-up on the low percentage of students who reported not feeling connected. We've engaged in activity with both the middle and high school faculty and staff to ensure that every student had an adult who was in their corner. Rather than leave the connections to chance, relationship mapping invests time in making sure that every student is known and supported by at least one adult. If we were unable to map out a substantial connection, we informally paired that child with a caring adult who was making connections and checking in on that student and their progress. We're looking at attendance and suspensions to keep them to a minimum. We know students do best when they're in school, and that positive proactive strategies work best to promote social, emotional, and academic success. Counselors, of course, pay attention to at-risk students, as these connections may be especially important for students who are having a hard time at home or in school.
And as mentioned, we recently re-administered the survey. We're currently unpacking that data and preparing summary reports. This data will be helpful in analyzing our work around this pillar and documenting our progress to this point, as well as informing our next steps.
And now we will shine a light on Rethink, which is our SEL curriculum and program. So Rethink helps students develop important social and emotional learning skills like stress management, resilience, and empathy while learning to build a safe and affirming culture within our school community.
At WEC, our school counselor and school psychologist developed a K-5 SEL scope and sequence inclusive of monthly themes. Our guidance delivers lessons by pushing into general education classrooms. Psychologists use lessons for special education classes and provide Tier 2 and Tier 3 supports. Letters are sent home to parents to reinforce skills at home and shared with classroom teachers so that we continue to impart these skills in the school environment and that the skills and strategies can be practiced at home. In addition, we developed a new K-5 health education outline that is being taught by our PE and health teachers in the classrooms.
At the middle school, high school, we have integrated components of our Rethink program into our health curriculum. The Rethink lessons have supplemented existing lessons that are aligned with state-mandated lesson content and objectives. This year, we have begun sharing this information with our teachers and parents to further our application of understanding SEL to practicing SEL.
This year, we are focusing on advancing a system of positive behavior and supports. Instead of using a piecemeal approach of individual behavioral management plans, a continuum of positive behavior support for all students within a school is implemented in areas including the classroom and non-classroom settings such as the hallway, buses, restrooms, and our new turf field. This universal Tier 1 approach, this is a universal Tier 1 approach. To accomplish this, we have developed the PAWS program. PAWS stands for Positive Attitudes, Act Responsibly, Work Towards Success, and Show Respect. This is being implemented in different settings. Using the school-wide behavioral expectations, teachers define, teach, model, and reinforce behaviors in their classrooms. We've developed grade behavioral expectations, similar to the matrices in common areas of the school, but defined in the context within each classroom.
All students in grades kindergarten through 12 have a comprehensive, skills-based health education program in Tuckahoe. Students are faced with making choices every day. With Rethink and our comprehensive health curriculum, students are taught that the choices they make have implications on their lives. The K-12 health education curriculum was designed to provide learners not just with information, but with the skills to analyze and imply that information in their own lives. At COTL, our teachers are teaching health lessons that are aligned with key New York State lesson objectives and goals. The lessons incorporate reading instruction for achieving health literacy while also providing a variety of hands-on, minds-on, and physical activities. We have worked to create a continuum of instruction that prepares our COTL Cubs for middle and high school. At the middle and high school, we have placed an emphasis on acquiring skills that are essential to establishing and maintaining a healthy lifestyle. In order to fulfill this objective in the area of SEL, we have partnered with organizations to provide meaningful instruction and opportunities for practicing health-enhancing behaviors. We have partnered with organizations such as Rethink, which focuses on recognizing and managing emotions, building stronger relationships, and making responsible decisions. We have also utilized resources and collaborated with representatives from the One Love Foundation whose focus is to empower students with the tools and resources they need to see the signs of a healthy and unhealthy relationship while learning lifesaving prevention resources that are available to them.
To kick off our PAWS program this year, we started off with grade-level specific assemblies to introduce PAWS. PAWS in kindergarten may look a little different in fifth grade. At our principal's coffee, we provided parent resources and support. At our last principal's coffee, we focused on executive functioning and organization. Future principal's coffees, we may have a different topic. Push-in counseling lessons to help students develop important social-emotional learning skills such as stress management, resilience, and empathy while learning to build a safe and affirming school culture. Our COTL support team works on targeted skill development. It could be whole class or delivered in small group. The COTL support team will cover topics like self-esteem, stress management, and peer pressure. Our principal and assistant principals read aloud. Perfect opportunity to connect with students and families outside the school day. This type of activity strengthens the homeschool connection and brings the school community together, and is just plain fun for John and I. The Buddy Bench is a great way for students to get included on recess activities. We know recess can be a challenge for some students, and the Buddy Bench is a resource for those students. Rack Week. In partnership with the PTA, Rack Week is designed to call attention to the value of kind actions and gives everyone a chance to experience the joy of passing along kindness to others. We look forward to another Rack Week this year and working with the PTA. Our kindergarten picnic is a great way for our new COTL Cubs to meet new friends. It is also a great opportunity for our new COTL families to meet also new COTL families and form new friendships. And of course, our kindergarten Friendship Day celebration focuses on the importance of friendship and what good friends do for one another.
Assemblies and programming are an important part of the student experience. They bring our students together and focus our community on shared learning experiences. We began this year with two assemblies. We expanded our 9/11 programming through a partnership with the Eastchester Rotary and Historical Society. This began with an 11th and 12th grade assembly in which three local community members with close connections to the events of 9/11 addressed the crowd. This was followed up with an 11th grade trip to the 9/11 Mobile Museum. This allowed our students to reflect on the sacrifices, tragedy, and heroism of this day in our history. We also partnered with Volunteer New York, which brought its Be the Change program to our 7th through 10th grade students. The importance of volunteerism on community service, career-building skills, community building, and taking positive action was discussed. Choosing to spend your time doing something purposeful implies that you have interest in something beyond your schoolwork. You like to see challenges and are making a difference. Students who have experienced volunteering more frequently demonstrate higher emotional and social awareness. We are planning upcoming programming with the Maxwell Institute that engages students and leads them to understand risks and perhaps question their own misconceptions about alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs, and what it can do to the developing brain. This assembly will directly challenge attitudes towards marijuana, vaping, tobacco, and e-cigarettes. We continue to build our extracurriculars and sports programs. We're very excited to expand opportunities for our students. This year alone, we have seen the return of Boys Modified Soccer. And in addition to modified cheerleading, JV Girls Basketball, varsity wrestling, and expansion of our Pioneer League, and we have expanded our after-school fitness program, which now meets five days per week, and on any given day, you can go up there and see over 20, 25 students in the weight room. We've also been proud to see the implementation of our Quiz Bowl team and the return of our Snow Sports Club. Research shows that students who have undertaken sport experiences or extracurricular activities more frequently demonstrate higher self-management and relationship competencies. Finally, our school trips are back, and students continue to build new learnings and connections. For example, our 6th, 7th, and 8th graders went to Boundless Adventures this fall, which empowered and inspired them to challenge themselves both mentally and physically, all while cheering each other on. The teamwork is exactly what builds social and emotional intelligence.
We now turn to pillar two, the diverse needs of learners. Here, we identify two driving goals. First, the implementation of Orton Gillingham approaches district-wide. We understand that the explicit teaching of the alphabetic decoding skills are helpful to all students, harmful to none, and crucial to some. This is the cornerstone of our training in the youngest grades. Secondly, continuing the implementation of revised RTI structures at WAC and Tuckahoe Middle School. Student intervention plans generally include information about where a student needs support, proposed intervention strategies for providing that support, timeline for the intervention, goal for student progress by the end of the timeline, and methods for monitoring progress. We want to make sure that we are targeting student improvement with data and structured supports. The special education program under the leadership of Dr. Sweeney is committed to using scientifically-based literacy programs to teach reading. Not only have we expanded training in Wilson, but we are actively engaged in the rollout for the teachers who completed their training last year. These programs will benefit all students learning to read, especially those who struggle. Each grade level at COTL has a special education teacher who is trained in research-based literacy approaches with promising results that we will share shortly.
We also continue to strengthen our core instruction with the implementation of foundations in the earliest grades. We are also piloting the Hagerty Phonemic Awareness Program. Daily Hagerty Phonemic Awareness lessons teach students to understand that spoken words are made up of individual sounds called phonemes, and it's one of the earliest predictors for best reading success. And we're constantly exploring research and best practices to ensure our literacy program addresses all the components of good reading, which include phonemic awareness and phonics, as well as fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension.
So as you look at this slide and you see the focus on word recognition since September as students who were receiving reading support, you can see the success of implementing consistent literacy approaches combined with research-based reading interventions.
So while we train more teachers in Orton Gillingham strategies and approaches, it's important to recognize that this is much more than having teachers trained and certified in Wilson reading systems. It's important, undoubtedly, but we also want to make sure we are constantly reflecting on our data and reviewing the research. Data teams and grade-level professional learning communities in grades where literacy skills are still emerging are unifying around these questions and implementing interventions based on both data and academic literature. Students at Tuckahoe are getting a comprehensive introduction to lifelong reading, and as they begin to grapple with the complex concepts in the upper grades, they will be both prepared and eager.
Response to intervention, or RTI, identifies struggling students early on and gives them the support they need to thrive in school. The word intervention is key to understanding what RTI is all about. The goal is for the school to intervene and start helping before a student falls really far behind. This involves three main building blocks. First, high-quality scientifically-based classroom instruction, which Dr. Keough spoke to previously. All students receive high-quality research-based instruction in the general education classroom. Secondly, ongoing student assessment. Universal screening and progress monitoring provide information about a student's learning rate and level of achievement, both individually and in comparison with the peer group. These data points are then used when determining which students need closer monitoring or intervention. Throughout the RTI process, student progress is monitored frequently to examine student achievement and gauge the effectiveness of the curriculum. Decisions made regarding students' instructional needs are based on multiple data points taken in context over time. These data points also inform our Tier 1 general education practices. For example, our building-wide data team has already made recommendations for grade-level PLCs. Third, tiered instruction. All, I'm sorry, a multi-tier approach is used to efficiently differentiate instruction for all students. The model incorporates increasing intensities of instruction, offering specific research-based interventions matched to student needs.
Similarly, we are expanding some of the structures from COTL into the middle school. For example, our AIS program is now tiered in order to provide more targeted supports to our students who need them. To monitor progress, we use eye-ready benchmark assessments. This allows us to ensure our interventions are working. It also allows us to exit students from the program who are on grade level. The middle school and high school understands that in order for students to get the most out of their education, they need to complete an initial crucial step, attending school consistently. However, for some students, this isn't as easy as it would seem. Various barriers keep them from coming to school, which will impede their ability to be successful now and in the future. We'll talk about this at a future workshop because it is a driving goal. But in this pillar, it is a focus we have stepped up our game to improve attendance, find out the barriers, find the barriers, and come up with plans to engage families and students on their road to success. Team meetings at the middle school provide a structure when students are struggling academically, as indicated by state tests, eye-ready scores, and are the first line of defense. In addition, students who are struggling in the classroom are also brought up by the team for intervention plans. And now I will move on to spotlight our college preparation. Preparing for college, as some of our trustees know, is a very complicated process. At the Tuckahoe High School, we are committed to supporting students and families as they navigate these systems. To date, more than three-quarters of our senior class have applied to schools with early action or early decision. Currently, our small senior class can boast of 26 acceptances and with more to come. We support our students in many different ways, and we'll explore that this evening. First, we work closely with Jump Start to help prepare students for testing requirements for the college admissions process. You will hear more from Jump Start shortly as Matt Warshay, the president, is here. Additionally, our College Cafe, working with our guidance counselors, is an extracurricular support offered during the students' three times. We've hosted 13 successful meetings so far, and there are more to come. Partnering with families is crucial for our students at this juncture. To date, our guidance council has hosted parents' meetings with families of all our seniors. We have begun to meet with parents of 9th graders. We also held information sessions hosted by the guidance counselors for 12th, 11th, and 10th grade parents, previewing and walking through them with college applications and admission process. This Thursday, we'll be hosting for the 8th and 9th grade parents. Our counselors are also in frequent contact with families. They're valuable liaisons as families navigate these systems. Lastly, we never miss a chance to celebrate our students. This includes, we've already witnessed, two National American Semifinalists, two commended students, and one national African-American recognition award, and one national Hispanic recognition award.
Diving a little deeper into the ways we support students and families, we will turn to the College Cafe. As you may be aware, the College Cafe is a new program that helps students fill out the Common Application, match with Navions, construct their resume and brag sheet, and obtain letters of recommendation. Our counselors review applications, essays, and supplements with a more thorough lens during this extracurricular offering. There is also writing support provided during There is also writing support provided during this time. Counselors brainstorm, edit, and read college essays, as well as collaborate with the English department. Recognizing the importance of the home and school partnership, we schedule many meetings for families of high schoolers from the second our students enter their freshman year of high school. In the 8th and 9th grade, as Dr. Linehan mentioned, this communication is part of our parent night. We discuss getting off to the right start, diploma requirements, and the importance of course selection while encouraging extracurricular involvement. In 10th grade, we begin discussing career exploration with our students, which includes coordinating an opportunity to participate in Pathful Connect, which was formerly known as the Virtual Job Shadow, and three main areas are focused on: interests, abilities, and values. In 11th grade, we introduce the college process. Our counselors host individual student and parent meetings, where students begin to create a basket of initial colleges of possible interest. Our counselors also assist with ACT/SAT signup and collaborate with the Jump Start program to encourage our students to prepare for the standardized test. Our senior meetings, held in the fall, focus on the college application process. This process begins early, as over 80% of our current seniors have already applied to college during the fall season. In partnership with East Chester High School's Guidance Department, we also offer a financial aid night, which was hosted this year on October 27th. Since we did not have access to any large commons spaces, we have not been able to host a college fair on campus this year. However, we have connected parents with other opportunities through both virtual and in-person meetings through our guidance office. We've hosted over 51 colleges to date, virtually and in person, in our guidance office, and our college fairs will return next school year.
In the fall of a student's junior year, students begin to prepare for various standardized exams. Tocco High School administers the PSAT exam to our students in October, and we also administer a practice ACT, as well as a practice SAT exam. In the spring of the junior year, students begin taking the actual SAT and/or ACT exams. Students and their families also have a junior parent meeting with their guidance counselor, where the following topics are covered: compiling a preliminary list of colleges and universities; the importance of the SAT or ACT exams to the college process; the Common Application essay prompts, where students begin working with ELA teachers to help them begin structuring their essay; students begin collecting letters of recommendation from teachers and staff; counselors review Naviance and how it is applicable to the college application process; counselors also review extracurricular and athletic achievements, highlight awards, and make sure all students are familiar with the important application deadlines. In the 12th grade, students and their families have a senior college counseling meeting. The emphasis is helping students compile a final list of colleges and universities and ensuring each student is aware of the specific actions needed to be taken and the deadline for those actions. Other areas covered in the senior meeting are: helping students with their Common Application; Naviance college matching and understanding the submission process; supporting students with uploading transcripts and letters of recommendation; answering questions related to FAFSA and the financial aid process; confirming letters of recommendation, as well as supplemental essays; and explaining the role of the College Cafe if needed. Annually, we host an alumni panel, where students who recently graduated from Tocco High School speak with our seniors and provide insight on what to expect at college and answer any questions our seniors may have. This year, our alumni panel is scheduled for January 5th. We also work closely with Jump Start Academy, as Dr. Linehan mentioned, in preparation for students taking the SAT and ACT exams. Tonight, we have invited a representative from Jump Start, who will start an overview of their work with our students in just a moment.
The next slide. So, the next slide takes you through the process we've already followed. 11th grade students take a practice ACT and practice SAT in the fall. Basically, the results are looked at, families have a consultation with Jump Start to decide which test is the most appropriate, based on the practice exams they took. And through the Carapella family, we thank them all for this. We offer 10 free small-group sessions to each student who participates, 5 ELA, 5 math, continuing in time for the spring SAT or ACT exam. Mr. Warshay's here. I'd ask him to come up and just give more details on the Jump Start program. Answer any questions?
We can go here.
We've been working with them for a number of years.
So, yeah, we've been happy working with Tocco for a couple of years now, and I think the program's done quite well for helping the kids. Just kind of to reiterate what Bart and Scott said, we have the kids come in and take a diagnostic, full-length SAT and a diagnostic, full-length ACT exam. These are the two major tests right now on the board. Gives them the opportunity to really see how they're doing and fare against one another. It's different than a PSAT or a pre-ACT, because these are actual full-length exams. There tends to sometimes be some preconceived notions that the PSAT is what the kids will see, but it is a shortened version. So, our efforts are to bring in the full-length exam. Once the both tests are taken by the students, then what we do is we meet with the families, we sit down individually with all families that are involved, then we discuss different options of how to proceed. So, first and foremost, we try to help the kids choose which test is better for them based off of not only their gut feeling, but also some numeric data that supports going in one direction versus the other. It's quite cumbersome, especially with the busy nature of junior year, to prepare for both. So, we're big advocates of helping them find which test is best suited and kind of have them stick to that one particular test. From there, what we'll do is we'll group them in groups of typically groups of three. We find that's the optimal. I mean, two or three seems to be the optimal amount of kids in a group. We pair them based off of test choice, first and foremost, and then based off of ability level. So, based off of their test choice and the scores that the students put forth on the diagnostic, we can pair them, therefore, to make the groups more efficient and more successful if students of similar ability are paired. From there, we pair them with whoever I feel would be the best-fit tutor, based off of gender, expertise, experience, and then, you know, the Carapella Foundation, I guess, has been really generous to provide these 10 free sessions that we get the kids kind of rolling in the process. So, from there, after the 10 sessions are completed, families have the option to continue at a discounted rate, that we provide a special rate for Tocco, or not, whatever's best suited for them to continue. So, a lot of them will take what we asked them to do would be an end-of-program benchmark exam, so they can kind of see how they've fared from the 10 sessions. A lot of families elect to do this, not all. And then, they can choose to continue with us or go on another route that's best suited to their needs.
And now, to look at class sizes district-wide. We believe that small class sizes are important to the work we do with students. At Cottle, we look at the average class size based on grade bands. We believe it is important to prioritize smaller class size in the lower elementary grades, where we are building a foundation for literacy and numeracy. As we move into the upper elementary grades, we still value small class size, as indicated by the numbers on the screen. For our K through 2 classes, the average class size is 18. For our grades 3 through 5 classes, the average class size is 22. Also, as a note, our 4th and 5th grades operate under a content-specialty model, or departmentalized, where students travel between classes. This model has been extremely well-received, allowing our teachers to become experts in specific content areas and continuing to support our students with access to high-quality education.
At the middle school, the average class size of core subjects is 23. At the high school, the average class size of core subjects is approximately 16 students. This year, we did find imbalance in some of the middle and high school classes, where the class sizes of the core subjects were up to 30. As a result, we hired another teacher, and we'll be reviewing protocols to minimize imbalances going forward. We are constantly refining our processes and practice to optimize our student-to-teacher
As a reminder, this is only a status update on our first two pillars. Our work here is not finished. We continue to make progress with an eye toward preparing every student for excellence. Tonight, our Tocco leadership team has made it very clear that Tocco leads the way. A special thank you to our district leaders, Dr. Chris Keo, Dr. Kate Sweeney, and Ms. Sparks, for their careful attention to the needs of our students K-12. Thank you to our building leaders, Mr. Marash, Mr. Kilgallen, Dr. Linehan, Mr. DeBellas, and Mr. Colaswano, for their inspiring and compassionate leadership. They create learning experiences to our students that make them excited to come to school. Children in their building know their immense value and that this is a testament to their environment that it creates. And thank you to our educators and staff, because we know that's where the rubber meets the road, that help our students thrive. Their work has been critical in accomplishing the updates you've seen here tonight. Thank you, of course, to our wonderful students and families. Our work in Tocco is made special because of all of you, and the support has been great. Lastly, I really want to thank the Board of Education for their service and leadership. Your counsel and continued high expectations are always appreciated. We plan to unpack our other pillars at upcoming workshops and celebrate the great work happening in our schools as part of our budget process. We always feel we can get better, and we appreciate that you will have comments and suggestions for us. At our next workshop, which is Tuesday, January 3rd, we will kick off the new year with a deep dive into facilities. We will provide an update on our new construction, and at our next board meeting, we will talk about where we are going with that, and what we haven't got done, and what our upcoming plans are for improvement. And we will engage in a discussion on that date, on our workshop date, about our field use. I just want to thank everybody for the great work that they did here tonight, and we're looking forward to our discussion. Thank you.
Great presentation. A lot of good stuff in there. It was pretty jam-packed, but a lot of material. It's good. I'm sorry, what was your first name again?
It's Matt.
Matt. All right, Matt.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you also. Thank you for coming. Were you able to find a seat out there?
I reserved it.
I do remember you, Matt, from the times that I've sat with you with my two daughters. So, I'm sure you see so many, you know.
Also, I, yeah, roots in track these days, and the mass, you know, now that, you know...
I know, exactly. So, maybe we'll start off with any questions or comments for you, so we can get you out of here, seeing I don't have to stick around for this whole thing. So, I had one real quick. I know that Jump Start's been doing this for us for quite a few years now, and I'm sure that you get a lot of kids from the other neighboring districts as well. So, I was just wondering if you've noticed anything, any patterns, or anything specific to Tocco, in terms of what our kids typically... I mean, I know the spectrum is wide, I understand that, but if the answer is no, that's fine, but does anything stand out to you about Tocco kids versus our neighboring districts that you see over and over again? Any kind of pattern at all?
Like, in comparison to other schools, like in terms of academic scores?
Yeah, you don't have to manufacture something. If the answer is no, no, it's fine. I'm just wondering if, with the amount of sample sizes that you've had, if there is some sort of trend or pattern that you've noticed, and good, bad, indifferent?
I mean, I think the scores relative to some of the other schools in the area are slightly lower, like when it comes into, like, at least to speak to standardized test scores, like SATs and ACTs. As a whole, I think, you know, the...
It was kind of a tough question, I know.
Yeah. I guess just slightly lower in comparison to some of the local schools. The other schools may be some larger, larger school districts. So, that may be the reason why.
Do you also... I just have a question. Do you, like, in our school, we offer it to everybody. Are there other schools that offer it to such a huge spectrum of kids? Or do you do more private?
Yeah.
So, for the comparison, I think that's important.
For sure. I mean, we work with East Chester mainly through the PTA, and we offer it to the whole junior class. Same thing with Hastings High School and Iona. So, those are the ones that we're currently working with, and it is offered to, like, their entire junior class. Sometimes they even invite sophomores, but it is offered across the entire grade level.
Do the parents pay for the other districts?
So, East Chester will provide two free sessions, so you guys provide the most, which is really nice for the kids.
So, East Chester provides two sessions through the PTA, and Tocco provides the 10 that we spoke about. Some of the other schools don't provide any. They just provide the initial diagnostic tests, and then they let the families meet with us and decide whether they want to proceed on an individual or mini-group level, mini-group level, but there's no complimentary sessions for the other schools.
Yeah, and so certainly, when you're talking about comparing other schools, which really wasn't the point of my question, but there's a lot of factors that can play into why that may be. You know, obviously, if we're offering it to everybody, you're getting the broad spectrum, and other districts may be getting some kids that are choosing to do that. I guess what I was getting at, too, and again, I know it's a tough question, is even more deeper than that. So, like, if you notice any trends, like, on the math sections, if there are particular sections or aspects of math that Tocco kids tend to struggle with versus other sections in the math, of the math test, or in English, vice versa. So, I'm looking, we're always looking for more data points, right? So, you know, you're obviously, you know, a source of data, potentially, in terms of seeing a lot of our kids coming through, and you're sort of objective, you're independent. So, I'm just wondering if you're seeing any sort of pattern in any particular aspect.
Well, I was also thinking, like, between SAT and ACT, do you see kids from Tocco taking one more than the other?
Yeah, I would say it's a pretty even split between the two tests. I mean, ACT, this is like, kind of very, kind of bird's-eye view. I mean, ACT tends to favor stronger readers, where SAT tends to favor, like, kids who are stronger in math. Again, this is just very bird's-eye view. There's a lot of other factors that go into, like, deciding between the two tests. I mean, the math grades, the math in general, I would say, seems to be a little bit weaker. I can't speak to, like, whether it's specifically geometry, Algebra I, Algebra II, trig, but in general, I think the math compared to the English and reading tends to be, for my Tocco families, tends to be a little bit weaker for most.
How difficult would that be for you to track going forward if we asked you to? And I know that's not necessarily contraction, you're not obligated to do that, but if you know you're getting, if we just made an ask, and I don't know how, I would assume that these tests are computerized, or they're electronically captured, I would imagine, right?
No, they're paper.
All paper?
Yeah.
Oh, it's all paper? Okay. Do you enter them in? Do you scan them in or anything, or no, you don't do that?
We don't scan them in. I mean, I have all the scores, like, once we grade, we actually, yeah, I think we finished grading all the Tocco... I have all the numbers, so that's all on the giant spreadsheet, all the numerics of how every kid did in every single section. What's harder, what I'd like to, what would be nice is to have, like, everyone take that final test at the end of the 10 sessions.
Yeah.
But not everyone does, and that's not included in the program. So, some families choose not to take it, which, if they did take it, it'd be nice, just, and I try to encourage them, because then I could really say, hey, we started here, and now we're here after 10 sessions, and that's not even, in my opinion, a full-throttle program. It's very generous, and it provides quite a bit, but some kids do need quite a bit more.
But everyone, everyone that comes to the program takes the first test?
Yeah.
Right.
Absolutely.
So, how difficult would it be for you to...
Like, just to aggregate?
Aggregate all the, each year, maybe send us, if you were willing to do it, a report about, not specific to names, obviously, not specific to names, just overall, this is how Tocco kids did on each section of the math versus each section of the English. A little bit of more feedback for the administration and the staff, just another data point.
It's easy, it's done. So, I could just hit send. Yeah, so, I mean, that's, usually I do provide to the guidance counselors, to Jess and, well, Phil now, but Brian in the past. I would send them the spreadsheet, so I'm happy to provide that to you guys, and you wouldn't want the names on there? We usually provide it with the names.
Well, I want to, I'm not going to speak for the administration. Well, I'm not going to speak for the administrators, it's just an idea. So you can just ask for questions to them. But I would not, I'm not interested, obviously, in who it is.
I think that we could follow up, maybe, Mr. Keough, curriculum, we'll get in touch with you, and we could do disaggregated.
Yeah, it would be nice to know that information.
Sure.
Because then we know where our strengths are, and then where we need a little bit more work. And maybe that is something that could be sort of integrated more, or spent more time on within our programming.
The only problem is, you said it's not really like an item analysis, so you couldn't pinpoint which math.
Well, there's sections, yeah.
There's sections.
The sections I can, but not within, like, for example, the math section, I could say, you know, as a whole, they scored, you know, you could see all the kids' scores, and I could take the names off. Like, I could put it in order from lowest to highest without putting any names, just so you can kind of see the range and everything like that. But I couldn't provide, like, whether geometry was more of an issue than...
Oh, you couldn't do that?
No. I could say, like, I could show you, like, all the math scores, all the English, all the reading.
Okay.
No, then that, yeah.
Yeah, to get that granular.
Some of the questions may require two disciplines.
Yeah. Well, the reason why I would assume that you would is I would assume that that's sort of how you then structure the instruction for each group. You know, you probably, I would imagine, I don't know, your field, I might, that a kid takes a test, and then you're looking, you do have the ability, I would think, to sort of say, oh, these are your strong points, these are your weak points, this is what we're going to work on.
For sure. And usually what we do is, like, the math tutor then would take the reins, and they break down, so if they know, like, they have three kids.
So they would look into that individually, independently?
Bobby, Steve, and Joey. They would, if I'm the tutor, I'd grade all the tests the day before, review it and see, okay, there tends to be more of a trend on these types of questions, and we're going to focus more on that session. But I don't, I think it'd be tricky to know exactly where. The other issue that's kind of posed in that data, which will skew it, is that, you know, how the test is structured now, you're supposed to guess on everything. So some kids, a lot of kids, especially on ACT, and even on SAT, tend to have some timing issues.
I see.
So they're going to guess on quite a few, especially an average to below-average student.
Yeah.
And that drastically would skew and probably direct you in the wrong direction as to really potentially where the problem spots lie. Because you're encouraged to guess. So that's another kind of...
So I thought I had a good idea, and it obviously was terrible.
I wish I could, yeah, give you more...
All right, it was just a thought.
And the other thing is, some of the content might not have been learned.
Yeah.
So that's the other problem.
Okay.
Thank you for joining tonight, I appreciate it.
No problem, happy to be here.
So I want to talk a little bit about the timeline, and sort of as a parent who's now going through this, I think every parent has their own timeline, the kid has a timeline, everybody has timelines, right? But I think one of the things that, you know, as far as SAT, ACT, that I've noticed in other schools is that they do it a little sooner. So you talked a little bit about as far as when Tuckahoe has their students take that, and what do you recommend? Like, what do you do for East Chester and the other schools?
Yeah, I mean, I would definitely recommend starting a little bit sooner than we start here with Tuckahoe. I know it is challenging to find good, applicable days, so you're kind of like caught between a rock and a hard place. Because one thing is, kids are, you know, overcommitted these days in finding... Well, this is happening across the board at all schools, Hastings, East Chester, Iona, Holy Child, is that it's really tough to find days where kids can come in and do these tests because of sports on Saturdays and issues of that nature. So, but I would recommend an earlier start. I think kids are preparing earlier than they ever have been to kind of get this out of the way, so to speak, and get it done. So I mean, if there could be changes in the future, I would recommend a slightly earlier...
So when do the Hastings or the Iona, when do they take it, the practice?
Yeah, so they're shooting more, like, right, I mean, ideally, I'd love to do it end of summer. The problem with that is that you run into, you know, families that are traveling, kids that are in camps. It's really challenging. So at least September, October would be a little bit more of an ideal time to get the ball rolling. Especially for more advanced kids, they're going to want the opportunity to take the test at an earlier part. So like, maybe a December...
November, December, right?
Yeah, like, November, December, if you're advanced, and then you'd want to start, you know, August, September, and get a program rolling for yourself. The average student is kind of taking the tests, usually SAT is March, May, tends to be like the main one for an average student. And then for ACT, it tends to be the February and the April exam tends to be like... But for those students that are a little bit stronger, average to above-average, getting a head start for them really is helpful. And it doesn't hurt the other kids to start a little bit earlier. The only thing that, you know, to Cynthia's point, you know, like, there is sometimes a little bit of a math gap, if depending on what math curriculum, what they've learned, if they're not in Algebra II, TRIG, yet. That being said, the way it's structured, at least on our behalf, is that we tutor to the test. So even if a child hasn't had all of Algebra II or TRIG, for us, it really isn't the end of the world, because we teach them those specific questions that are repetitious in nature, that rear their head multiple times on the exam. So that doesn't really bother us that much. Of course, we'd always prefer, if they had the course, but it's not a deal-breaker to start. I'd still, if I had to choose, I'd rather start early and not have the math than start later and have the math.
Because there is some benefit, even if they took it once without having it, maybe having the opportunity to take it a second time, because you pick which score you want to send. And hopefully, you would see some sort of improvement. And then, which brings me to my next question. When you see those, when you see the tests that, you know, if the student has taken it twice, how much of a, how much of a step higher or a score higher do the students tend to make if they take it twice? Like, what are you seeing there? Like, is it two points they go up on the ACT? I mean, you know, what does that look?
It's a hard one to answer, because it really depends on the kid, you know, like, where they start, right? If you have a student who starts really high, their margin for growth is going to be smaller. If they start really low, it's a really hard question. I need the specific student to kind of tell you a better answer. I mean, the average ACT score is roughly nationally around a 21, and the SAT is about a 1060. Westchester County tends to be slightly inflated because of places like Jump Start and some other places. So, you know, like, kids are, on average, are a little bit higher, 1080 on SAT, you know, high, 1090. And then ACT is more like a 22, 23, which is higher than the national average. So those kids coming in on the average should grow. It's hard to give you, see, like, with my program, not just with the Tuckahoe program, a full-throttle plan, it's usually about five to seven points on the ACT, and it's about 150 to 200 points on the SAT. But that's not just with the 10 free sessions.
Right, that's with the additional.
Correct. That's like, they do the 10, they sign up for what I feel they need to get them there. But, and again, like, you start higher, you're not going to get a buck fifty to 200, or five to seven points. If you start much lower, you might even squeeze out a little extra. So I hope that answer, it's a little tricky question.
No, it does. So we just need, we need to think about if there is a way that we can make it so that they're getting the benefit of the tutoring ahead, you know, earlier. That's what it sounds like.
I think everything's earlier. I think kids are doing everything early. I mean, even, you know, like you just said before, there's 20-something kids know, or 20-something acceptances, right? So it, I feel, just now that I'm living it, it's, oh, we should have done that a little sooner. It's kind of like the message lately, and I think it doesn't hurt to start earlier.
I agree.
Because it comes up like this, they're always going to be busy. I also think there should be more real prep for the summer for our juniors to come into their senior year really ready to go. And that's something we can talk about, and not obviously specific to Jump Start, but I'm just saying in general. And everybody's got a different timeline, you know? Some kids might not follow that, but I think you have to put it out there and have it as an expectation. That's my feeling.
I agree. You can always, you can always slow it down and start later. It's harder later. If you start early, you have the breathing room, and it's more knowledge, too.
Right. And now what they're doing is, they're taking APs, and now everything's coming to a head, and they're taking the SAT, and it's overwhelming. So if we give our kids the advantage of doing a little bit, getting out there a little bit earlier, and then have expectations.
Yeah, I mean, that's another great point. Like, we try to, for our more advanced kids. The other reason, to Laura's point, is that APs hit, like, between May 3rd and May 13th. And a lot of the, you know, second-round SATers, or even sometimes ACTers, there's kind of like, it's like a sticky time for them. So if they're done a little bit earlier, it's really advantageous to those students, especially the more advanced students, because they're taking APs to get it kind of out of the way for them. The other, you know, thing is that you get, run into kind of finals. There's two June dates. There's a June SAT and a June ACT. So again, if you waited too late, you know, you might be overcommitted in terms of your studies. So sooner kind of gives you a little bit more breathing room to get it knocked out.
Any trends you're seeing overall in terms of colleges with these tests, or anything? I know, you know, during COVID, there was a lot of schools that went test optional, you know, test scores optional. You've seen that go back the other way now. Any trends at all that are already in...
Yeah, I mean, it's the big topic that I get asked all the time. And I'll give you, like, my updated two cents on it, from doing research and speaking to advisors and things like that. So some schools have gone back to test-required now, since things have kind of calmed down a bit from COVID. It's mainly the really uber-competitive schools. I think it's MIT, maybe Georgetown, but a few of them have gone back because they found that it adds a metric that's valuable to them. Most of the schools now are still test optional, and there are some that are test-blind. Test-blind is mainly a conglomerate of schools, for the most part, out in California. They won't look at it if you get a 36 or a 1600, they don't care. Test optional is the bulk of the schools. The key thing with test optional that people misunderstand is that the word optional doesn't mean that if you take the test and do well, that you shouldn't submit them. These kids are really, now, this is where the advantage is really coming to play. If I take the exam and I score, my scores are commensurate or better than where my GPA is, it's going to be advantageous for me to send my scores, for multiple reasons. First of all, I stand a better chance of admission compared to someone who doesn't submit a score. Again, there's kind of like this unwritten rule, that people don't talk about it. But from my talks at all these college fairs with all these college admissions people who, like, give me the ins and outs in the coffee room, they're like, yeah, I mean, if I see a kid who's got a 34 versus that same kid from Oklahoma who didn't send me their scores, it's a metric that I can sink my teeth into, and it adds value to the application. That's why it's optional, it's not blind. The other thing is, several schools, you need to submit an SAT or ACT score to get scholarship money. So that's a big thing, that's, we're talking big, big bucks in scholarship money. The cost of admission has gone through the roof for colleges these days. So preparing for these tests, if it's a student that can do well enough to utilize them, now can really save money on college if they score, even if they get a small scholarship. I've had kids get, you know, seven grand off a year, but it's still $28,000. So they can rationalize the ROI on spending the money on the tutoring, because they're like, hey, you know, they'll find a way to throw me some money. I had a girl recently who got a 34 in the ACT, and she went to UConn, but they gave her $22,000. It was $88,000 that she's benefiting because of her combined GPA and ACT score for UConn. So, you know, like, when their second kid came, it wasn't even a question. I didn't even get to finish the meeting, they were already, they signed the paperwork before I did. So there really are some value. It's not for everyone now, because, from the flip side, if you have a student who prepares and really does poorly, then those types of kids are going to kind of wipe it under the rug, so to speak, because it's not going to add value. If your scores, let's say for Villanova, you know, let's say they're looking at a 1350 to 1450, and you're a great student, but you get a 1280, and you just can't top that. In that particular case, you're going to want to utilize the test optional option and brush them under the rug. So that's, and again, I guess other people may have other opinions. These are just, it's still kind of like, maybe not clear to everyone, but from my research and my understanding, this is my take on it.
All right, great. That's helpful. Thank you.
It was very helpful. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anything else for Matt?
For all the parents who have elementary school kids, you're going to blink. And you, too, when you open your eyes, you will be right here where we all are with this whole question of, should we do the tutoring, the ACT? Oh my God, college, you know, application time. So it really comes by fast. Take it from one who knows. Yeah.
Cool. All right. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you all for having me. I appreciate it. Thanks.
If you want to hang out, you can hang out.
I don't know, someone took his seat. I don't know.
Thank you, thanks a lot.
Bye, thank you.
All right. In terms of the rest of the presentation, there was a lot in there. That was, you know, you guys are obviously collectively doing a lot with regard to both topics. I mean, there was a lot in there. So I just made a couple of notes just for some clarification. I don't have too many questions. I think it was pretty well-presented, and it was pretty straightforward to me. I saw something in there about brain-based learning. Can somebody explain to me what that is? I don't know what that is. What's brain-based learning?
Yeah, so our work with IDE, with Innovative Designs for Education, they talk a lot about the adolescent brain and its different points of development, and how you can kind of take advantage of certain things, like their attention span, and design your lessons around that. So I think they say 15 minutes, but they say probably you should plan for seven to 12 minutes of, you know, direct instruction before you have them do something. So they'll say, once you know that, you can plan for something like a small break for discussion activity, or jot down your ideas and share them with your neighbor or something like that.
So it's teaching strategies based on the age of the child and where their brain development likely is?
Yes.
That's the idea? Okay. Okay. I'll pass it around. Anybody have anything else?
No, I'm just curious, because like, with, I'm thinking of like, boys versus girls, and sometimes the brain development's different, so I wonder how that plays into it.
Yeah, I mean, they focus mostly on age, and they would say, I think, you might remember, was the time when a kid really hits his full maturation, like, 28? So they set up until then.
26, maybe 28 for math. It was 26.
So one day when we hit that, we'll know, you know.
Kind of eaves out by 26, so. You may think that you're just applying to colleges, you've got a long time to be watching your kids.
Yeah, yeah. I had one question with the funding for Jump Start. Do I recall, like, is the funding, we're losing the funding?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's ending.
So the Carapella Fund is done after this year?
After this year. So, and we are the ones who had the 10 classes. And I feel like we need to try to see if there's any way we can keep that up.
I don't know, I don't know.
There's another grant we got from the Kurtz family. So we have something in the bullpen, as they say. I'm optimistic we will have a little leftover from the Carapella estate. So we've got a wonderful gift from the Kurtz family. So we got a little more in reserve, and, you know.
Maybe you could get one more, one more year.
So that one may get...
So you're listening at home.
The Kurtz family may get us another year, you think? I don't know, I forget how much that was.
I think we'll get more than another year.
Okay, good, oh, good.
Oh, that would be really good, so that gives us a little time to figure out how we can...
Maybe we can get our foundation, something like that.
Yeah, because this is clearly a good, a good thing for our students, and everybody has access to it. So in terms of equity, it's just right, right there.
They initially wanted to give scholarships, and I called the estate lawyer, and I got approval to use this program.
To for that.
They'll get more scholarships out of this program.
That's right, that's right.
Makes sense, yeah.
You know, three kids at graduation. So we do do that at graduation.
Yeah, and also, it also helps more kids than just two or three.
Exactly. I love that.
Yeah, it's good.
It's really positive.
It's great.
What were your thoughts about, since we have all of the administrators here, what are your thoughts about having the tutoring, the Jump Start, start earlier?
I will tell you that personally. I totally agree with that. You know, I've seen it, I've lived it. And I do think that, you know, maybe not for all students, but certainly for a group of students, especially those who are taking APs and other things to start earlier. It also gives them a longer time to get prepared for it. They may be taking it all the way through the spring to the last time, but it gives them a longer time to digest it and study.
Was it just some inhibitor that was causing us not to do that, or was it just something like that?
Yeah, basically, this came about through instruction, class, you know, class time. You know, so we picked the days, the conference days. You know, so we picked the days, the conference days. Obviously, things have changed. We've been doing this probably eight or nine years. I would suggest next year, if they want to do it before Labor Day, do it in a tiered way because you're not going to get all the students. You know, we have a captive audience on the day before Thanksgiving and we do an outreach for the students. You know, we go to the classrooms and explain. You know, we basically call parents of kids who haven't signed up. So the guidance counselors, Perillo and Mr. Treglia, really put a lot of effort in. It'll be a little harder in August. But if you want to tier it next year, to Laura's point, you get 25 or 30 kids or whoever is interested, get them on the accelerator and then you could follow, you know, as Matt said, some of the kids who were, you know, maybe not benefit more from instruction than Matt and not as into, you know, the process, they could do it the way we do it now. So you look at it two ways, you know, they could start earlier.
I think what he was saying is that the kids who were further along should start earlier, you know, the kids who have the APs to worry about and more of that. So maybe we could have the counselors look at which kids would benefit. And I know it's the summer, but if parents hear about it early and understand the importance and we get ahead of it this year.
Or even just the first week of school before things really start to pick up, like they're back, you have, teachers are here for that conference day, you do it.
Oh yeah, that first conference day is a good idea.
Yep. That's a really good idea.
No, that was really helpful.
That was very good.
I have a question about the RETHINK. So RETHINK right now is in for middle school and high school. It's only being done in the health class? Is that how it's worked?
Yeah, so for the last few years, we've rolled it out. We had to figure out how to align it to the state standards and the state mandated curriculum in our health classes. So it's in our sixth, seventh, eighth and high school health class. And now this year, we're now rolling it out to teachers and families so that we're going to try and create a shared vocabulary and have everybody on the same page with what's being covered in our health classroom, especially as it has to do with social and emotional learning. And the goal would ultimately be to have it in more and more classrooms throughout this building.
Yeah, because that was my concern because health, kids only see in high school one time out of their four years. So I feel like it's valuable on an everyday basis. So that was my only concern. But that's good to hear that you're going to roll it out a little bit more.
I have a question, if you don't mind.
Yep.
You done with it? Just a couple of things. Thank you. The presentation was great. Mentioned, I don't know if it was you, Mr. Kay, or Mr. Marash, about phonological awareness increased 13% since September. Mr. Keogh?
Yeah.
What grade was that?
So that was the aggregate.
The grades are on the slide.
Oh, okay. I didn't see a grade on the slide. Maybe I just missed it.
Let me see if I can find it. Yeah, one through eight.
So you combine those?
It's all, it's all one through eight and they used different, it depends on the grade, what they use to, you know, like PAF has a fluency test.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know. What was, that was my next question.
And the WISC.
Oh, you used the WISC?
Different dibbles depending upon the grade that the.
Okay, okay. Depending on what they could take, I understand. Okay. But 13%, that's, and that's since September?
Yes.
That's a nice increase. Okay, I just wanted to highlight that, that, would I read that right? Then the other question I had was, when you talk about relationship mapping in the high school, right, when we talk about, who's doing that exactly, Mr. Bell? Is that the?
Guidance counselors.
Guidance?
Through departments.
Okay.
So we did it as a group grade level for the middle school and we did it through guidance counselors and departments for the high school.
And each child was mapped?
Correct.
They had enrollment of the whole school.
So we took an alpha by grade level, broke it up, and then were able to go through each person individually.
Okay. Oh, because I didn't hear anything, but that's very interesting. So each kid was, okay.
And that's middle school and high school?
Correct.
And do the kids know who they're going to?
No.
It's darn amongst the faculty and staff.
And, you know, I think a lot of the kids that didn't match up to people were new kids also, but that also made us, we had a lot of new kids move in, but it also made them think, well, we need to make sure that there's an adult connected to them.
Okay. And then the other just thing, when we talk about diverse learners, that popped into my head, and I know we talked about this when we were putting one, back when we were doing the pillars and having conversations and having presentations and we had consultants come in. And I know Dr. Leno, you, this has been also a topic in the past, but one of the things that is just to put it out there is that, you know, the diverse learners are those sometimes that aren't going to college, right? And so, you know, that BOSIs and that ability to teach trades, right? We used to be able to do that back in the day and then don't have that opportunity anymore. And I wonder if we can think more creatively about that topic in terms of a district and offering that to students. You know, one of the things is always transportation, right? So can we buy a van, you know? Can we, you know, can we think of ways to give those children who, those students, I should say, exposure to that, right? And we have a great BOSIs. I mean, I just happened to go for it. It was about starting early times. It was a presentation before COVID. And the kids came in that made us breakfast, right? It was a panel of superintendent's there and a lot of board of ed there. The children came, you know, the students came out and they're from Eastchester and Palom and they all introduced themselves. They were culinary, going for culinary. And then I walked around, just I had some time, and I see kids putting, you know, sheet rocking and different things like that. It's a wonderful, it's just like a college campus. It's huge.
So the BOSIs, I totally agree.
And I know it's expensive. I know what you're saying. I'm just saying, I think that we do need, as we talk about pillars, that diverse learning and that every child is meant for college, that we should really try to be maybe as a district, talk about that topic.
I know, I know it's a budget season item.
It's always a budget item. And transportation seems to be a big part of it.
It's very much something we should, we should consider, but I think.
Merge with Eastchester, you know.
It's, well, we always try to merge the buses, you know, with other districts whenever we do even, you know, any kind of at a district kind of program. It does save money, but the transportation, so here's what, you know, I worked in Eastchester. When you've had that program for a long time, it's already built into that 2% cap. So you can continue doing it. It's, you know, we, it is a, look, I think it's an important program too. The culinary program is one of the best programs. But it is really expensive and it will, you know, it could be something that we could talk about as we're budgeting, but it is.
Yeah, I definitely would flag it as something to reconsider again during this budget season. I know the last, the last time we considered it during the budget, I think it was like three or four years ago, Dr. Leno?
I'd say three years ago.
Maybe four years ago.
We had the program and it was cut. I mean, I think it was, you know, the alternative. We do have the internship program at the high school, but by then it's too late.
Yeah.
And that's, you know, at the expense, the transportation, we're able to share. Eastchester had double shifts. They had, my lectures had 30 kids going at one time. So it was morning and afternoon. It's a real hitcher ride on it with Eastchester.
Yeah, I know the last time the transportation was a big, I think ultimately what we were looking at was enough, enough money or enough budget to maybe do three or four kids.
Right.
And I think our concern was also what's the process for picking those kids?
Right, picking the kids, that was the issue.
I think, I think as a board, we're very much open to it, Dr. Goodman, but I think, you know, just kind of rethink.
We could talk about it during budget. It is, you know, it's an interesting thing because sometimes the kids that do the best in the program are the ones who are doing well in school, because you have to still pass regions. You have to take now, BOSIs put in these end tests that you have to take, you know, it's not the same as it was years ago. So for some students that it might be the best thing for, sometimes being in school is the best thing for them because you want them to make sure that they get all the basics while they're here. The other thing we can look at is vocational programs for kids after they finish high school and do a counseling program where we can help kids get scholarships for those kind of after programs after they get their degree.
I think I love that idea. And I think, sorry.
Guidance, they refer to jobs. I give, if I get information on jobs, the Eastchester Fire Department test is coming up. I mean, this goes to guidance and, you know, follow up with students, you know, at post-high school. And as far as BOSIs go, it was a wonderful program here. I mean, if you're looking back to bring it, it would benefit, you know, some kids who really don't, college is not their thing, which is fine. But when you don't have something that's not your thing, you have to look for something else.
Yeah.
I think that's the challenge in life for all of us, whether you're, you know, academically involved or not. And, you know, so this is, a vocation can make you a big success if you get, you know, motivated and exposed early.
Absolutely. And to Laura's point, I mean, it's a great resource that we're not taking advantage of.
It's a great resource, yeah.
Yeah, I think we should revisit it again. It's a challenging one though. I know it's difficult.
Well, try to get more information on the prices of them and also more vocational programs.
Vocational programs just in general. Yeah, right. Not just the.
Fire department. And also, I don't think we should only think about it as far as vocation after, you know, a secondary school that's in the vocational area just for kids who aren't academically inclined. I mean, you can make a lot of money in construction.
That's right. Well, that's what I mean. It doesn't necessarily mean you, it's all or nothing. It's, it could be absolutely, yeah.
All encompassing.
Also, just in terms of like curriculum too, like we have a really good, we have STEM program at the elementary school, the engineering offerings at the middle school and high school are really strong, the internship program, and then also with extracurriculars, we have Habitat for Humanity. So I feel like there's a lot of things there that will really support kids if we look at a program like that or if we look at something post-high school.
Yeah, I think vocational, because I don't, I don't really recall having a lot of vocational conversations in the, you know what I'm saying? It's testing, testing and scores and grades and GPA and all that, but real true digging down deep a little bit and seeing what other kids might like to do. The other thing that made me think of, and I wrote this down too, is we used to have Career Day. Do you remember that? It was the middle school. I actually came in for it, but parents volunteered and we had doctors and we have.
The PTA's been doing that.
But we brought it in, it was, because I remember the guidance, the middle school, she ran, the guidance counselor ran it.
Right.
And it just stopped.
I met with the PTA. They have a monthly meeting with the PTA and it's one thing that we're bringing back.
Oh, good.
With the guidance department.
Because I think sometimes, I think, you know, I gave a presentation about my field and I had some, you know, students and they would think they were eighth grade, came up and asked me a lot about it and stuff. And some kids have never even heard of it. I mean, it's, every parent has something interesting to give, whatever they're doing.
I watched a couple of those from last, they're really good, very interesting, actually.
Oh, I know the PTA virtual, but I mean, we came into the building.
Oh, they came into the building.
But we're going to go back into that.
Oh, good, yeah, yeah.
I also think it might be a good idea to talk to recently graduated students who have gone on to, whether it's a vocation or college, to come back and share what their steps were and what they're doing, how they're doing, what they thought was most challenging and kind of share that journey. Because I think that, you know, you can come in, they love you, I'm sure, but we're old, they don't care. You know what I'm saying?
Trying to say one.
So, you know what I'm saying? So I think when, when the, when the person is like younger, I was speaking actually to a staff person here and she was sharing with me that her daughter has gone into acting and she's been doing all of these things. And I said, how great would that be? Because she's a recent graduate. She could come back, whether we highlight them at a board meeting or something, but get them back, you know, our students who are in college or in any sort of vocation. We have recent graduates, and when I say recent, I'm saying within like maybe the last five years. Some of them are actually police officers now. And so to really come back and really talk and share, I think they, I just think it would resonate with the students. We love you, but they don't love you. You know, they're like, they think we don't know anything.
The way we do the college, you are young. To me, you're young.
You're so young. We're so young.
But the way we do the college panel, I think having graduates come back, you know, somebody might be an investment banker and somebody, and the kids don't know what that is, and somebody else is a police officer. Just have a variety of people and a physical therapist.
And a physical therapist, yeah.
Not me.
Yeah.
Much younger one.
I have one more question back on the diverse needs learners section. There was a mention there about AIS tiered system. Can someone explain to me a little more about what that, what that's about?
Do you guys want to take that, John?
Right, so it's a, AIS is a multi-tiered system of support, right? So MTSS. So you start with the general education classroom setting, right? So at Cottle, for example, if a classroom teacher sees that a student is having difficulty with the coding, right? They'll consult the interventionist, let's say Ms. LaBista, and they'll develop an intervention plan and the classroom teacher and Ms. LaBista become the intervention team, student team, all right? They develop strategy, strategies, they use resources and they use assessments to gauge growth, right? And they'll do that for anywhere from six to 12 weeks. If the gap has not closed, then they'll likely come to the instructional support team for consideration for tier two. All right, so tier one's your general education setting.
Okay.
And then.
I got that. I'm sorry. Yeah, I thought, I don't know if I misinterpreted it, we were talking about something in the middle school, high school in terms of how we're approaching kids who are in AIS.
What we did was this year, we implemented with iReady, using that data. So at the team meetings, we evaluate students based on their performance in iReady.
Okay.
And also, iReady we did in, I guess, early October, September. So now we'll be looking at first quarter grades and recommending for AIS. We tried working in splitting the AIS by tiers, two or three. The data I looked at, a number of the kids were already earmarked for special education that didn't do well in iReady, so they were getting, you know, resourced already. So, but not everybody was getting it. So we split them in AIS and, you know, we'll continue to look at the data.
Okay.
And they're in there, we look at the grades, first quarter's out, so we have those grades. We'll be looking at them in future team meetings. And the teachers give input on where they think they belong. For most cases, sometimes the teacher will say, let's, let's hold off and let's see, give them a little more time in the classroom before we put them in AIS.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Anybody else? I just had one final question. Field trips, I see Boundless Adventures was added, that's great. What's, what's, is there, what's the plans for bringing back more stuff? I know, you know, back in the day, we used to do Boston, we used to do Philadelphia. Is that stuff in the works? Is that coming back?
It's in the works, yes. So I've been meeting with Ms. Benedetti, who is our GO coordinator, trip coordinator.
Yep.
And we'll be getting pricing and everything for a seventh and eighth grade trip and there'll be information forthcoming very, very shortly.
Okay.
Both seventh and eighth grade, yeah.
Great. No, because I think we're all excited about these, that they're coming back. So anxious to hear they'll have more stuff.
Help all the kids that didn't get...
Yeah, you know, hey, we're... And I had a thought too. Did we ever, I don't know if we ever did this in Tocco, anytime, I know a lot of other school districts do do it, like, do we, for the high school, do we ever do, think about doing like a high school, like a dance or something like on a Saturday night or a Friday night, you know, in the gym, DJ or something like that? I know my high school used to do it.
I can speak to that historically.
Yeah. Has it been a disaster?